James Littlefield, 84 Smith Street. I'd just like to say a few words about the proposed digital sign that I understand Rotary is donating. For those of you that don't know, I'm sure most people know where Smith Street is. It's right across the way here. My wife and I go down that street four or five times a day. It is heavily trafficked and it has an awful lot of pedestrian traffic. There's a lot of people walking dogs, there's people pushing strollers, there's people jogging, there's a great deal of pedestrian traffic. There's a crosswalk right out here. And I think the last thing we need is for someone to be rubbernecking, trying to see what the next great event is at East Lime and looking at this digital sign. I have a friend of mine, he says every time he goes down Main Street, he is tempted to look and see what's playing at the movies, but he knows if he moves his head to the right, he's going to run over somebody that's crossing on that crosswalk. The same thing is going to happen here. It's a very poor idea from a safety standpoint, and I know a lot of you probably know, I write a column, a history column, monthly in the Post Road Review. I've written a book on East Lime history. It doesn't go with the town. It doesn't fit the mode of the town. So from a state, from a safety standpoint and an aesthetic standpoint, I think it's a poor idea and it should be rethought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sir.
Good evening. I have brought some handouts with me, if you're willing to take them.
Mm-hmm.
I have about three handouts.
Yeah, you have to state your name and your address in the microphone, obviously.
I think about it, 15 Cardinal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Charlie, did you get one? We'll get you one at the end of this presentation.
I'm here to discuss property assessments, specifically motor vehicle assessments and how they're done in the town. Currently, you guys, the board has the authority to recommend or to address this issue under 12-71D, which is contained within the packet. This allows you to tell the assessor what guide to use in reference to motor vehicle assessments. Currently, they use, the assessor uses the NADA guide. You'll see on the next pages of the handout where the assessor actually follows the Connecticut assessor's organization's recommendation. And the CAAO there, you can see on the second page of their letter, their opinion of our property tax or property assessment on motor vehicles is not to take in consideration the condition of the vehicles or the mileage. And of course, property tax is based on the actual true and present value of the property. So our assessor follows what the CAAO recommends, which is not to ignore motor vehicle condition and mileage variables when she does her assessments, and she does not. I examined her last year at a BOAA meeting and asked her if she considers motor vehicle condition or mileage when she does her assessments, and she does not. Now, the NADA book that is recommended by the Office of OPM in accordance with 12-71D, and you have a copy of parts of the NADA book that are relevant, states that you have to consider motor vehicle condition when you're using the NADA book. Now, the NADA book only has retail values that are useful for property assessments that have to be a retail value of the motor vehicle for cars in clean condition. And you'll see another paper in there in reference to what NADA has broken down, the conditions of the vehicles and the percentage of cars that are in those conditions. Currently, the NADA book, and historically, has only allowed for retail values of motor vehicles that are in clean condition, which are cars in very good condition. And that accounts for only 15 percent of the vehicles on the road, according to NADA, the press release that I provided you. Unfortunately, most of the cars, and likely all the, most of the cars in our town, are in average condition, which is no big surprise, average, it pretty much indicates that most cars are in there. However, the NADA book isn't useful to evaluate cars in average condition. They only give retail prices of cars in clean condition, which is upper echelon, only 15 percent of the vehicles on the road. So what happens is people who have a banged up car or a car that's not in great condition continually have to go before the BOAA and argue that gee whiz, you know, my car's not in clean condition, it's in average condition, and they give evidence, and they have to continually go back to the BOAA year after year because the assessor refuses to consider the condition of motor vehicles in her assessment processes following the CAAO viewpoint. And Office of Policy and Management, I spoke with Mr. Steve Jackson recently because he took over from Mr. Dave La Bastier as Undersecretary of the Office of Policy and Management. They feel obligated under 12-71D that they have to cooperate with the CAAO. So what the CAAO, what the CAAO is essentially doing is changing a property tax into an excise tax. And of course, with an excise tax, the value of, the actual value is irrelevant because it's just a simple tax that you do based on a schedule or some calculation. But in Connecticut, it's actually a property tax that we pay on our vehicles. So it should be based on the actual present value of the car on October 1st of every year, but that's not what, what happens here. So I'm kind of recommending the board to select a different guide and to select, I found the Edmonds Guide to be a reasonable guide, courts have accepted the Edmonds Guides as well, and choose that the average condition be actually the choice that the assessor has to choose when assessing vehicles because that's going to include the majority of the cars, 50 percent of the cars are in average condition, cars are also in lower condition. So it would eliminate a lot of the hassle over at the BOAA. Recently, we had the BOA hearings this weekend, and I was arguing these points, and the BOAA didn't even, didn't understand the arguments, and finally said, you know, we're not going to hear your case. So they basically violate my 14th Amendment rights to be able to present a case, and they reached a decision in my two vehicles that are in average condition of no decision, which is going to force me to spend, you know, money going over to Superior Court now. And of course, that cost is going to be steamrolled into you guys because you're going to have to pay the cost for fees and everything there. So to avoid that, I think it's more reasonable to choose a guide that actually would cover the majority of the cars on the road as opposed to 15 percent based on the CAAO's recommendation. And their recommendation is based on the theory that you don't allow for mileage or condition of the, of the motor vehicles when you're assessing the property, property assessment for our property tax. And they are essentially wanting to convert our property tax into an excise tax, and that's totally improper. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I would like to see a resolution for the assessor. It's coming up October 1st. Not to use the NADA book, it's perfectly within your authority under Connecticut statute 12-71D that's in front of you. And to recommend a different guide, I would recommend the Edmonds Guide, and that they use an average condition vehicle as the point to, to assess vehicles at. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. What they're doing at the BOA house-
We don't respond at this, at this juncture, just so you know. At, at public delegation, we don't do a question and answer. We do at the end.
Okay. Well, I'll stand by that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the board of selectmen this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Anne Thurlow, 80th Smith Street, Niantic. In, in case you didn't get the copies of a petition, we left with the clerk a couple weeks ago. I have a copy. I'm here to speak on the proposed electronic sign in the front yard of the town hall. I use that crosswalk on a daily basis, walking my dog, and I can tell you, it's a dangerous crosswalk to go by. No one ever stops, they don't see you, they speed right by. And honestly, it doesn't take a PhD to know it's a really bad idea to have one more distraction out there. The other, well, to go back to the safety issue, on the night of when zoning voted for it, the neighbors across the street were here and talked about a bicycle accident that day, and talked about how many accidents there are out there with the parking lot entering and exiting. You have Pine Grove, our neighborhood, you have the camp that comes in and out of that street at a fast rate, you have people coming up Pennsylvania at a fast rate. And honestly, I don't see the difference between reading that and reading a text on your cell phone. If it could be placed somewhere where it's at a stop sign where people are already stopped and have time to look over and read it, I think it's great, but that's just such a bad location. The other issue is the aesthetics of it. So many people feel like you've done such a great job with the sidewalks, the lights, Niantic's such a quaint little village. People actually love the sandwich signs. Nobody wants an electronic sign in the front yard, not just our neighborhood. And today, it was humorous, I was at Black Point with a group of women, and the most genteel little lady said, I hope they shoot it out. So honestly, please rethink it because I bet you 90 percent of the town is against it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. We'll move through our agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2015.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 2nd, 2015, as admitted.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any further comments or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Then we'll move on. It's approved. Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of September 16th, 2015, in the amount of $6,480.80.
Second.
Second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. First and unanimous, discussion and action about the electronic sign, town hall property. Typically, we don't have action, but because we received a petition, we decided to have action this evening. Would anyone like to make comments? We heard a few from the, from the public this evening. There was a sign, I, I'd like to clear up a few things. Let's, let's start there. The, the sign is not going by the Smith Street intersection. I want you all to know that. It's, it's going to be, there's a, there's a, there's a walkway that comes from the first selectman's office over here, and it's going to be on one or the other side of that, the other end of the building, if you will. I'm not sure, and I haven't had a chance to read through the narrative of the sign, but I actually talked to a few people that signed that petition, and they didn't realize it's not going to be a flashing sign. It's going to be a static board that, that will announce town meeting, 7:00 PM Wednesday, or referendum coming up, whatever date it is. Or when we don't have something coming up, it might say, "Speed limit, 25, please slow down," or "Please be mindful of people in the crosswalk." I, I'll tell you, in my position, I get complaints about the sandwich signs all the time. That's why the Rotary Club, in conjunction with, I believe, well, at least zoning, a long time ago, said, "What we need are electronic signs to get rid of some of the sandwich boards in town." They're, they're a distraction, especially when there's five lined up, and they're scattered throughout time. We're in a, we're in a place where we're trying to disseminate information, you know, 161 or Flinders Road was closed down a couple of weeks ago because of an accident going around Gordon Pond, and it would have been helpful to say, "Detour," you know, you know, Flinders Road impassable. It's not going to be blinking, there's going to be less messaging on other, in other areas. The bicycle accident, I was present for, it was a woman who got dizzy and just fell over on her bike, had nothing to do with the traffic. She had a dizzy spell on her lunch break. The aesthetics, I'm going to, I'm shocked that there was a comment that it's not going to be effective, but, but, you know, we all are entitled to our, so I'm going to show you first, and then I'll hold it up. It's, we're going to use a sign that's out there now. We're going to put a small sized, I mean, there's such things as very big electronic boards, and then a Rotary Club, I think that's going to be a blue instead of the, I think it was just too much, I don't know. This is what was approved. The zoning commission, who is our overseer of aesthetics, and whether it meets our codes or not, approved this.
Why?
So, and we, they have very stringent guidelines on electronic signs, and I know that Mark Salerno was chairman of zoning last, and maybe you can fill us in on what some of those rules are about what an electronic sign can and cannot be.
So I was originally against these signs, but when we did a little more research on it, the commission decided to consider it. We had public hearings, and the commission was very concerned about all the issues that were just brought up in the regulations. I don't have them in front of me, but there were conditions that there is no flashing, there is no glitter. I know everyone drives by the Waterford High School, and there's plenty of glitter and flashing, and that's why we were all against it originally. So there is a limit in the zoning regulations on how often it could switch. I believe that's at least 15 seconds. It has to be a single color to blend in. So we're trying to just replace a regular sign with a digital sign so it's easy, so it could be done quickly for emergencies, and it is definitely not what people envision. And if it ever becomes that, it's a violation of the zoning code, and it will have to be fixed.
And I believe too, there's, you can't advertise on it.
There's no advertising, it's for, for town use.
Town messaging only.
Yep. Okay. And from what I understand, Parks and Rec will take care of the programming, but that just the emergency dispatch will also have a code to get in there if they do have to put something on. And one of the things I thought about too is, you know, during storms, we occasionally lose power. This would be powered by a generator so people could get, you know, if they happen to want to come down and see the information, where there would be shelters or so forth like that. I disagree about it being as dangerous as a text. I don't think anything is, and having done that for 28 and a half years in my profession, there is nothing as dangerous almost as, as that. And if you'll notice too, the state now, up on highways are putting up signs, both on the Merritt Parkway and on 95 and 91, warning you, "Accident ahead, seek an alternative route." It's just something you'll glance at for a few seconds. And I think at a stop sign, it could be worse because people are reading the sign, foot could slip off the gas pedal, or forget that the stop sign's there. And the same thing with the elimination of some, some sandwich boards. And I think the design is very well, and the color, and it does dim when the sun goes down, from what I understand too. It'll dim so that the brightness, and it does go to sleep at some time, I think 11 or so at night, it goes to sleep and won't come back on until the following morning. Again, unless there's some type of emergency that they need to post up there. So I, I appreciate everyone's concerns, but I think this would be a good decision.
I'm glad you brought up the light, because that was another issue. We didn't want it to be too bright where it was a distraction. So the light definitely dims, it's going to be in control, it's not going to be lighting up the area. A lot of questions came up, and we asked some of the technicians about it that came in to testify about the security of it. There is plenty of security on there, pass-through protections and stuff like that, so it's unlikely to be broken into with, you know, by kids with any sorts of messages that would be inappropriate. Those were all discussed at the time.
And I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mark. Yes, it, one of my assignment, ex officio assignments is zoning. I've been present for all the discussions with this. There was extensive questioning of both Dave Putnam from Parks and Rec, John Wilson from Signcraft, as to exactly how this sign would work. And as other members of the board have reiterated, it does respond to ambient light, it will be put into a sleep mode at night so you will not have it blaring in your face, or if you live across the street. I too have listened to many, many complaints about the proliferation of sandwich boards on the town green, and this, as it was said, this, this may address some of it. And I think great lengths have been taken to make this aesthetically pleasing. It will, as, as I say, as other board members have said, there will not be flashing lights, it will be a static message, and in cases of emergency where there do need to be communication to the public of something that's happening, will be very useful to have.
And I'll, I'll also add that there was a limit placed on how many signs can be placed in town. I believe it was two or three the zoning commission approved.
I appreciate Mr. Littlefield's, I mean, I, we know he's wrote a book, he's been a phenomenal teacher for many, many years at East Lime High School, and all his, all his work he does at Smith Harris and things like that. But quite frankly, this sign's going to sit in front of one of the biggest buildings in town that do not fit the mode of the town. You know, if anybody was looking out in '72, what were we thinking? You know, I mean, come on. The poor people here from Smith Hair, Samuel Smith House must be, you know, I don't know what to tell you, but anyway, it's ironic and probably that the sign is going in front of the building that doesn't make sense. So I think we need to do it. It's, I read all of the zoning part of it with Mark's input on that also. To nauseam, they have got this down. I hope it actually does light up by the time it's done because there were so many constraints put on it. Honestly, probably 10 years ago, right after 9/11, you know, Homeland Security, all that money flowed into towns like ours, police department bought the, the electronic boards that you see advertising right in front of the police department on Main Street at the crosswalk. Stop at the crosswalk, or it's, East Lime Day, you know, is coming up next weekend. Absolutely, positively right in the middle of Main Street. They work phenomenally well, they work well at accident scenes, they work well for a lot of different reasons, and I just think we need to keep moving down the road with appreciating the past but also looking to the future. So I see myself, you know, making a motion and moving this on.
Comment?
I was unaware until yesterday that there had been a petition by the townspeople.
I'm sorry.
I don't know how that escaped me. Do you, could you tell us how many people signed that?
No. Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Thank you. And I think if I might address my question to Mark, the zoning passed regulations allowing sidewalk signs for businesses. This will not, they will still-
Sidewalk signs for businesses?
Right. That they can have sandwich boards.
Sandwich board signs? There are sandwich board signs that could be placed within five feet of the entrance that have to be, has to be chalk.
Okay. And because this does, this sign does not allow advertising, they will be allowed to continue with those signs?
Correct.
Okay. Then you mentioned that, however, signs would not be allowed on the town green.
They're not going to be allowed on the town green because we put regulations in there to require them to be so many feet from a major intersection to avoid safety issues.
Okay. So any-
They're talking about the electronic signs?
Yeah.
Not the sandwich board signs?
No, electronic sign.
Right. So what I'm saying is, is this going to replace the sandwich, sandwich board signs, which really have begun to proliferate the town?
Yes, it can. It was, we allowed nonprofits, I believe, nonprofits to advertise there, but it can't be used for political purposes and it cannot be used for commercial uses.
So in other words, this sign isn't going to eliminate?
No, it may. If, if the town decides that they want to advertise Little League signups, they should, they will be allowed to if the town hall decides to allow it. So yes, it can.
We are not yet banning that. We might be able to find this sign to be useful, this, and for the record, there's one being proposed at the entrance to the high school. There is a, there is a letter, you know, movable letter sign there now, and that might, should the zoning board approve that, I believe it's in front of zoning, it might come to us, probably not. It would go to an electronic board, same size, same rules.
And that may be the last sign allowed.
And that might be the last, and that was the only two planned. Whether you allowed three or 10, it was the only two that there is funding for.
So that was, that was your remark, when it would be limited to three or four signs? You're referring to signs of this type?
The digital signs. Yes.
Okay. How close will this sign be to the sidewalk?
I don't have the exact dimensions. It's, it meets the zoning requirements of setback. I, I-
From what I read, Mark, I believe it's the same exact-
Same sign.
Where the sign is now.
Where the sign is now, but of course, it's going to be moved.
Down this way for a-
But that's six feet. It's a guess.
All right. And this is all going to be programmed by computer?
Correct.
And so all the programming is done from the 911 center or the emergency center because in case of outage of electricity, they would be able to still be programmed from, using the generator?
They'll have a code to go in there. I think Parks and Rec will be able to do it. It's a computer program that you'll be able to tap in through internet and be able to change the board, so you won't have to be onsite to do it.
Right, but they could use the facility because the facility has a generator.
Correct.
In case of electrical failure.
We have a brand new generator in this building. Just installed within the last two weeks.
All right. And this sign would be visible from both directions?
Correct. Two-sided sign.
Straight on or angled?
Straight on.
Straight on. Okay. Thank you.
Good questions.
I'll move to approve, if none, I'll move to approve the installation of an electronic informational sign, as approved by the zoning commission, and to be located on the south end of the front lawn of the town hall.
Second. The motion has been seconded.
I have a, excuse me, an additional question. What is the timeframe for this, for installation?
Two years ago, the Rotary Club donated the money. It's been sitting, we've been waiting to get this done right, and waiting for zoning to go up with the right rules. Ma'am, I don't, I don't know if this will be done before the end of the year. I hope to, I hope it will be with this approval. We can go ahead and order it, and I'm not sure with the shipping and the, if they make these, you know, in a custom way, or if there's, there's a warehouse sitting in the other side of the state with, filled with these things. I don't know.
I forgot to ask also, is this, this going to require a platform to be set on?
It will be, I believe there's cement footings, much like our signs are now. So these two poles will be set in, and not a platform, but actually, I think the, the plan is to have flowers underneath it, there'll be a, bit of a garden underneath the sign.
So that's included in the price?
Correct.
And-
Installations included, not the flowers.
And the, I assume that they don't have to be some digging to make the connection to come into town hall?
Yes.
And that will have to be done by the electric company?
Correct. Paid for by this grant from the, from the Rotary Club.
Thank you.
An electrician, not the electric company.
Electrician, yeah.
Yeah. You know, there are, there are conduits out there, so I'm not sure if they're going to come all the way through the building, to be, you know, to be truthful. There's, there, we have our flagpole lit, so, and so there's, there's electricity in the ground out there, they might be able to pull it from there, depending on what's under there.
Thank you.
There's a windmill going next to it.
Depowering.
Power, the windmill. No one said anything about the windmill.
Okay. I'll move the motion in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? It's unanimous vote. Checking of the indices. Indices?
Indices.
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 Just the favorite part of the year.
I do it every year.
This is wonderful.
I'll move to appoint Attorney William Willetts Jr. of 216 Broad Street, New Loney, Connecticut, to examine the indices of the land records for calendar year 2015 in accordance with Connecticut general statute, section 7-14, for the sum of $2,000.
Second.
Second. Any comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank, now his name's gone out of my mind.
The guy we just mentioned?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Who did you, used to do this? It's a new name, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Bill is.
We've all lost the name. But anyway, he's done this-
Who used to do this?
He's done this for many years.
Bill Wil? Attorney Willetts has been done up to 24.
He's doing it, yeah.
Yes. Well, so I'd like to thank him for his service to the town.
Oh, God, are we looking for someone else?
No, no. And I don't- And I don't believe that in the 20 years he has raised his rate that he charges us even to reflect inflation, so I'd like to thank him for his service to the town.
Indeed.
Just a quick question, since I'm, could, tell me what this is really?
Nope.
It's a big secret.
Anna, do you want to, do you speak to this? Can you please?
What, what they do is they go and they audit the records that are recorded in the town clerk's office to ensure that they're done properly.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the, what we-
Did we vote? We didn't vote on that, yeah.
We didn't vote, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
I like your intention to move along, but, you know.
I really tried hard today not to jump through the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Is next on the agenda to give the authorization for selectmen, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, temporary impeachment, yes.
Okay. To execute an easement between the state of Connecticut and the town of East Slime, sign a waiver of compensation appraisal. Folks, what, what's going on here is on Route 1, right next to Mr. Ron's guns, Mr. Rando's shop, is a little town-owned piece of property with, you know, a pump station and all that, but right next to that is a bridge, and that bridge is going to be rebuilt by the state. So what is happening now, there are telephone poles, they go right, right down Route 1, right in front of Mr. Rando's property, and there's a, there's a pole or two right next to the bridge, which is therefore right next to the river. And what they're going to want to do is redirect, I think you, do you all have?
Yeah. The map.
The map? And what you see is-